From Windsocket, okay. I like to say that these are heavy changes, which I think it's too much. And I notice the 54, what I'm reading here is going to be longer on Sundays and holidays, 80. And, you know, I think that's quite a bit. I mean, it's 80, what, one way and 80 in another way? I mean, I think it's really, really too much, you know? And, I don't know, I guess that's all I have to say. I wish, you know, things would be much better.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I apologize for having my back to my constituents. It's not usually how I like to roll, but... So I want to go back to the efficiency study that you spoke about. We had one that was just finished. We had one maybe four years ago, one in 2017. We also had a Senate Study Commission. And so we have that data, right? That the efficiency study shows that there aren't any efficiencies that could be cut that would basically fill this shortfall, right? We have that data. We know that Ripta is operating efficiently. Is it correct to say that this is the largest bus service cut in the history of Ripta? Eighty-six percent of routes getting cut? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions or not. I have a lot of...
(inaudible)
Yeah, yeah. I know I don't have to tell you what that means to all of Rhode Island, particularly in my district. And when I'm looking at the Title VI review, you know, 54, that's bad. The other route that goes from Fairmount to Diamond Hill, really bad. Disproportionately affects people of lower means, disproportionately affects low-income folks. And incidentally, Diamond Hill is the location of the only grocery store in the city of Windsocket. So I think that that's really notable. And I don't have to tell you that, you know, for people who don't have cars and for myself, I had a period of time where I didn't have a vehicle. Everything is exponentially harder. You can't take your kid to the zoo anymore on the weekends because that's going to be cut. Sometimes it's the only way that people can bring their kids to the beach. It's the way they get to DHS. It's the way they get to and from the shelters if they're staying in a shelter, the way they shop, they go to work, doctor's appointments, medical appointments. So there was a $37.6 million hole in the proposed budget by the governor. The General Assembly added $15 million. You know, this budget shortfall is going to strand riders, but I think, you know, of all of the budget amendments that were put in, maybe, what were there, like 20-something of them? There was never a budget amendment put in to fill this hole. And I will finish up. You know, we could use, or rather, the governor could use surplus funds and gas tax revenue. He could use the money from the Roadie Express project, which isn't going to be feasible unless we have a robust transit system. He could increase Ripta's share of highway maintenance fund from 10 to 15 percent. Essentially, the governor has the ability to address this shortfall. He does not need the General Assembly to be able to do this. So I would, in the strongest terms possible, urge the governor to act on this because these cuts are simply unacceptable.
Good evening. My name is Pat Ford. I am with the Coalition Radio Network, and I also broadcast here locally on WNRI, 1380 a.m., Wednesday mornings. Since I've only got three minutes. The state of Rhode Island and Ripta, the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority, entered into a contract with the Rhode Island Football Club to provide free-of-charge bus shuttle services between their stadium and a variety of parking lots through Pawtucket. Since I couldn't get any answers by phone, I submitted an APRA wanting to understand the contract as well as the underlying communications that caused that. I got a copy of the contract, but I was denied 148 different documents regarding how this came to be. I've submitted an APRA now to find out how much that's going to cost. Let's just assume it costs $50,000. That's the price, perhaps, of a portion of a driver plus benefits. Instead, you've chosen to use that money for a privately-owned service that caters largely to folks in the suburbs so that they can get to their precious soccer game. A soccer stadium that charges, on an average day, about $200 to $300 to attend there. Is this appropriate? Is this legal? Is it ethical? I don't know, because I haven't heard from you, Mr. Duran, and I've reached out to you directly. So the first question, of course, and I will ask a question, is this service going to be canceled? Or are people from the suburbs still going to be able to get to their precious soccer game while the people in this, in a city I love and a city I broadcast from, have to walk? So that's my first question. I'd like an answer, please.
I'll talk to them some.
I've been promised that before. I've been waiting two months. I don't expect... I'm not optimistic, okay? So, folks, you need to understand that elections have consequences. Whoever voted for McKee, this is your birthday present. Whoever voted for people who voted in favor of the budget, which this was effectively approved, you're getting your Christmas present. Elections have consequences. I would like to believe in the good of Ripta. I believe in Ripta's mission, even though I don't personally use them. It's a critical part of our infrastructure. It's a critical part of our economy. It's a critical part of human decency. Yet, here we are. You're catering to Grabian, you're catering to McKee. Perhaps you'd like to educate us. I don't know why I need an answer out of hand. The real people who need answers as to why... And by the way, I'd also like to know how many other sweetheart deals like this exist that are going to continue in place while these folks have to walk to the supermarket. Educate us, please. You run this hearing.
I'll talk to you once after.
Are you afraid to talk to them? Your security guard? Come on. Why not answer these folks? Do folks... Are any of you taking the bus to the soccer stadium any time soon?
No.
Can't say I am.
All right. Can any of us, including me in this room, afford to go to that soccer stadium?
No.
So why? Come on. I'll hand over my time to you. Please, educate us. There's this notion, by the way, that is quickly sinking under the direction of Peter Alvi. Understand that there is an evil dark angel to this. It's Peter Alvi, who, after doing a great job at the Department of Transportation, has taken over Ripta, formerly beloved. Well, you see how that's working out for everybody. Non-answers tell the story as much as answers. Thank you all.
Hello. I am a rider of the proposed elimination route of the 9X. I live in Pasco. It says here that the impacted neighborhoods are Barville, Gloucester, and Smithfield. I would like to know why none of these hearings are held in those communities for people to be able to make their voices heard that are being impacted by the proposed elimination of the 9X. And also, I am a rider of the paratransit, the ADA route to get to my job. I'm hearing that the ADA routes are not going to be impacted, but at this time, the ADA 5 is still on a pilot program. And I am very concerned that I will not be able to get to my job nor my medical appointments once that ADA 5 pilot is no longer. Basically, my livelihood will be ruined. And I know to look at me, you may not think that I am a person with a disability, but I don't wear a sign that says that, nor do I wear a sign that says, "I've been in ICU eight times in eight years." But that's my life. That's my truth. And so, without transportation to my medical providers, it's essentially a death sentence for me. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Bagliani, Windsocket, Rhode Island. I've also submitted to the information and marketing some details. My statement right now is, while there's no denying that we're facing challenging times in our state, I ask Ripta to look behind the numbers of your study. Look at the people behind your numbers. I ask our state representatives, senators, and Governor McKee to please look at the impact that these cuts will affect. Our roads are crumbling. We will have more riders on the roads. Accidents. People are terrified of driving into Providence. You are now going to have people on the roads who are going to get in accidents. Emissions. So many of us do not have viable local routes to take. We are going to experience five times the amount it's going to cost to get to work. Carrying our equipment is not viable for certain areas. With regard to the X cuts, we have asked repeatedly that modifications be made, that runs be consolidated into one, that certain areas that are not serviced very often, like Slatersville, be removed. We've also asked that if you're going to cut X and force certain people into local routes, to work with CCR rider, let people park there, to work with Stop &amp; Shop, to let people park in the front where it's safe to park. We have received no response. Work with your riders. These people know exactly what's going on on the buses. They know what routes don't perform. They know what areas don't perform. We work in the same company. We cannot commute together. We do not have the same work schedule. We work with riders who know exactly which buses are performing, which sections are not performing. Work with us. We know. You're not on the bus every day. It's us. These people are a well of information if you listen to what they have to say. We want to go to work. We'd be willing to pay a little more to go to work. What we don't want is to lose something that we've had in place for 30 years. It's not going to come back. Once we stop taking the bus, that's it, we're done. We'll work until our retirement, and then, baby, we're gone. But we've taken Ripta for 40 years. And I think you really need to listen to us and work with us so that we can get on our way. That's all we want to do. Thank you.
And this morning, when I was in Kennedy Plaza, somebody was handing out these Providence Street Coalition badges, so I joined. I want to do my job here. First question is, August 7th, is a meeting of a commission?
It's a special meeting of the Ripta Board.
Oh, is it open to the public or is it private?
It's open to the public.
Where is it?
At our headquarters in Providence. We need to address that.
And, all right, that's one thing I wanted to know. Now, I can remember a time in this town when there was no local Fairmount, Walnut Hill buses on Sunday. And back then, I could walk a lot better than I can now. And the Windsocket Rocket ran only once every two hours, back and forth. And that was pretty rough. I'd hate to see it get like that again. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is John Flaherty. I'm from Slatersville. I ride the 59X. And I've been about a 20-year-plus advocate for transit, so I've followed Ripta over the years. And I want to start first by just thanking the pros at Ripta that have run a very efficient bus system for many years. It's not just a one-time thing. It's been happening for a while. And I think that oftentimes, the agency gets a bad rap because it is always seeking money. And the reason it's always seeking money is because it's been dependent upon a revenue stream that's been declining. And as you pointed out earlier, it hasn't been keeping up with expenses. So I know that these are not cuts that anybody on the staff wants to do, but it's necessary to be within budget. I want to point out that it was over 20 years ago that the organization Ripec, the Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council, put their finger on this funding issue and said that, at the time, holding true, "Ripta will face annual service reductions unless a multi-year fiscal get-well plan is adopted and implemented." That was back in 2002, and not much has changed. It is unconscionable to be proposing such draconian cuts, the largest cuts in Ripta's 59-year history, at a time when we should be expanding and enhancing Ripta, not shrinking it. I know you want to expand it. I know there's a vision for doing it. It's the Transit Naster Plan, but at six years old, hasn't had sufficient funding to advance it. This will affect tens of thousands of residents, tens of thousands of residents and their employers, by the way, which I don't think the employers are necessarily aware of that yet. And if these cuts take effect, it will take years in order for Ripta to recover. So I want to end by pointing out that there is a solution. Senator Murray has already raised it, and it's one that was actually put on the table by Governor McKee. And it was during a June 25th press event at which he was opposing the state budget. And when the question came up about how he would do it any differently for Ripta, he suggested an approach that hasn't yet been taken. And that approach is to transfer on a one-time basis, which is what we need at this very moment, up to $15 million from a combination of surplus funds and gas tax revenue that's about to be freed up by the end of debt service payments on a bond. So as Senator Murray pointed out, the governor has the power and the ability to approve that tomorrow, and that would address the... It would avert the service cuts as we stand here today. But then, the state needs to get serious about developing a long-term, predictable, and reliable funding stream in order to sustain service and to also enhance it. So I thank you for what you're doing. I hope that this doesn't come to pass. And my request is of the governor to exercise your idea that you talked about on June 25th. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Sue Langwa from Windsocket. And I agree with everybody who came up here and spoke. I have been taking Ripta forever. Yeah, this is going to be a big impact on the people who work, go to school, medical. Yeah, I just can't believe eliminating the 75. When I used to work, it was like I would take the 54 to 75, you know, to go to work. And I think eliminating that is going to hit a lot of people. The 87, I can't believe that you want to change that into, like, almost an hour and a half. That's a long... That's a long wait. What I don't understand is right here, and I always brought the question up about the 66. Now, the 54, I don't know if any of you have ever taken the 54, but the 54 is crowded quite a bit. And you go on the 66, which is only, basically, now it's only a half an hour, where they want to up to 45 minutes. You can't do that. 54 is the main focal point around here. Okay, well, I hope you guys make a great decision, and I urge everybody to call this governor's office and, you know, give him your opinion. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I represent District 20, Windsocket, Cumberland, in the Senate. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the issue affecting Rhode Islanders, especially my constituents in District 20 in Cumberland and Windsocket. I am here tonight to strongly oppose the proposed cuts to public transportation that will devastate our communities. The Ripta Board is forced in suggesting layoffs, pay cuts, and loss of service, and we cannot allow this to happen. Just to put things in perspective, the General Assembly has already allocated $15 million of the $32.6 million that Governor McKee slashed from last year's budget. Despite this, Ripta is facing a staggering $17.6 million shortfall. This is not a budgetary issue. It's a failure of leadership at the highest level. Let's be clear. This is the governor's problem. The governor has the authority to reallocate funds from state allocations or federal grants without needing our approval. Yet, he has chosen not to. Why? Our public transportation system is in jeopardy, and we can get it fixed today if the governor would simply act. In Cumberland, we are facing a complete elimination of weekend service on Route 71 and a complete cut of Route 75. And Windsocket, weekday and weekend frequencies of Routes 54 and 87 will be dramatically reduced. This is unacceptable. Our residents rely on these services not just for convenience, but for their livelihoods. I am committed to working closely with President Lawson and the leadership team in the Senate to secure the necessary funding to Ripta. But I urge the governor to take immediate action. Our communities deserve better. Our public transportation system is essential, and it must be preserved. We need to ensure that our residents have the reliable public transportation they need and deserve. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you, John Brien. Windsocket, Rhode Island, State Representative... Thanks. State Representative, District 49, here in Windsocket. This is not the first time that we have these public hearings here in the library, whether it's with Ripta or whether it's with other organizations that come here, the Board of Ed. And they make the point to say, oh, we're going to have a public hearing. And then, and not to bust on you, but I appreciate your ability to come here and read slides to the people in this room, but they're not here because they want to hear about what's happening with changes on Reservoir Avenue or Jefferson Boulevard. For us, and the area I represent is Windsocket and North Smithfield, but particularly the Fairmount District, which relies heavily on Ripta's service. And the General Assembly did its part this year in allocating the $15 million to Ripta. And I just want to bring out a quote that... Well, a tweet that Dan McKee, Governor Dan McKee, put earlier on X. And I found it really amusing, and I read this walking into this hearing tonight. It says, "Rhode Island is committed to fueling business growth, empowering entrepreneurs, sparking job creation, positioning our economy for long-term success." How are we going to do that if we can't run a bus company? I mean, that's what it comes down to. I mean, I feel like this is all a fait accompli. You guys are going to come here, we're going to do this kabuki theater, have this dog and pony show, you guys are going to go back and say, well, we listened to that comment, but these are the routes that we're going to change. Well, to quote my late father, "Once again, the poor people in Windsocket are going to take it in the knickers." I mean, it just always happens this way. For once, why can't we just look at, "These routes don't work, these routes aren't used, but these people use these routes and need these routes." This is what public transportation is all about. So let's leverage the money that the governor has available, the funds that were made available by the General Assembly. Let's run an efficient bus company. Let's help the people who actually need the help and utilize the services of mass transportation. Because if we can't run a bus company in Rhode Island, we're never going to run a state properly. It's that simple. These people are the ones that are interested here. I think we ought to have a concern about them and not so much what's happening on some East Greenwich route, because this doesn't affect them. This change here that we're talking about tonight truly affects the people in this community. And I know that's hard for you to understand because you'll get in your cars, you'll go back to Providence, you'll go back to Cranston, you'll go back to wherever you're from, and you won't worry about it. But we will. It affects the people here. And so when you're making your determinations, which unfortunately, I believe have already been made, I hope just some of that is taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Randall Rose. I'm from Providence. I'm a member of the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition. Don't have much to add to what people have already said, but I do think we need to be careful to not talk about this as if Ripta is the problem or as if we just have to get Ripta to change its mind. Ripta was not given enough money in its budget. The budget that they were given was $10 million short of what they'd need to keep service going. And as much as Ripta wants to keep service going, and I know they do, there's no way that they can continue to maintain adequate service around the state with the budget they have. And in the end, it's going to come down to... Sorry. In the end, it's going to come down to actually getting politicians to send more money to Ripta, whether that's the governor or the General Assembly. So it's... I know a number of people have spoken about this, but as long as our words just stay in this room or just go to Ripta, it's not going to make a difference. I've been passing around this flyer. It has the phone numbers for Governor McKee's office, Speaker Shakarchi, Senate President Lawson. People really need to be contacting their politicians. And I gave a link where people can find the phone number for their state rep and state senator. So, of course, a lot of them are right here, but it's... I do think it's important, because I know a lot of the rank-and-file state reps and state senators really do want Ripta to have funding. It's good to ask them if they will really support an additional $10 million to Ripta, not just the budget that Ripta already has. But in the end, these decisions are mostly made by the state leaders at the top. And the way the House Speaker and Senate President work is, even though they know there's a lot of public demand to keep Ripta going, they experiment. They try making cuts, they try shortchanging funding, and they see if there's a backlash or an outcry. And if there's not much backlash or outcry, then they're not going to give more funding. So I think people really need to speak up. That's why the phone numbers are on that flyer. People really need to speak up. And when you talk to your state rep or state senator, make sure that the state rep tells the Speaker of the House they want that $10 million freed up. Make sure the senator tells the Senate President they want that $10 million freed up, whether it's done by the governor's request or somebody else. The money has to get there. So please make sure that this word gets to the people who really make the decisions, because a lot of people rely on Ripta. And if we shouldn't be cutting Ripta, we should be expanding it. So thank you. And I do want to say it's also a good idea to join one of the bus rider organizations around the state. I mentioned the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition. There are two other really good ones, Rhode Island Transit Riders and Save Ripta. All three of them do good things. I'm in all of them. So if you join organizations, we can have more of a voice, and then bus riders won't be pushed around. So thank you.
Hi. My name's Cara Provost, and I'm just a citizen from Pawtucket. And my... I imagine many people aren't here because they couldn't get here on a bus today. My son uses the bus. He lives in East Providence. He uses it to get to work. He uses it to get to health care in Windsocket. He and his wife have one car, and there is no way for him to get to work and to the places that he needs to go if he cannot take a bus. And I know that's the case for many, many, many people. It's also an environmental issue. We need to have good public transit. I would take the bus more often. I have the luxury of having a choice because I do have a vehicle at my disposal, but I do try to walk and ride my bike and take the bus when I can because of the environmental impact. If we had a more reasonable budget for Ripta, we're a small state. There's no reason why we can't have better public transit in the state and be an environmental leader. And it also is an economic issue, not only for people to get to their jobs, but Ripta provides jobs for people, right? Bus drivers and things like that. So for so many reasons, I think that... I hope that the report goes back, not just to Ripta, because, again, they were given... They were lowballed in their budget. It's not Ripta's fault. But for Ripta representatives to say to the Rhode Island government leaders that there is a very robust demand, and there would be more riders on Ripta buses if there were more buses running, they were running more frequently, and routes hadn't already been cut. So thank you.
Hi. Buenas noches. My name is City Councilor Christina Conteras Fox. I'm very proud to represent the great city of Windsocket. I want to echo pretty much everything that has been said here tonight. I think you've heard firsthand and seen firsthand who these cuts are going to be impacting. It's workers. It's folks who take these buses to be able to go to the doctor, to go to their job training courses, to be able to go to see their families. job training courses, to be able to go to see their families. And the cuts that we're talking about, they can add up to an hour, or at least closer an hour, to everybody's normal commute. And these are buses that are riding through as full as the R line does, you know, between Pawtucket and Providence. But the type of cuts that we're talking about, not only diminishing service from the 54 and the 87, but also, I believe, we're going to lose one of our flex buses too. I mean, you have folks, a lot of people who can't be here tonight because their health is quite poor, they're, they can't, getting to and from is not very easy for them. So for folks in our neighborhood, people going from East Windsocket to their doctor's appointment downtown at Thunder Miss or Community Care Alliance, that might be, if we make these cuts, that'll turn into the equivalent of them trying to go from East Windsocket to Newport or to Cranston. So really, really examine, because I mean, these are some painful cuts. The General Assembly should have passed that extra $10 million into Ripta's budget. Should've, would've, could've. It didn't happen. Here we are. The governor has the discretion and the ability to fill in this shortfall. I don't know if he's doing that or what the plan is to even examine that. I am of the mindset that when it comes to cuts like this, these are not the only solution, but they are, and I don't mean this in a vicious way, but for too often, for people holding the purse strings, they're the easiest solution. But this is a solution that is going to cause nothing but problems here in our city, which is already facing some challenges trying to meet our bills and keep our budget balanced. We can't keep going back to our homeowners and other folks who are high taxpayers here and saying, "Keep going, keep contributing, keep contributing." They're going to turn and say, "Well, I could if I could get to work," or "If I could get to the doctor." I mean, these are things that, if we're trying to improve Rhode Island overall, this is exactly contrary and in fact, going to send us backwards on that really important mission. So please really take to heart everything that you're hearing tonight. I know you're going to be going all around the state. Every single community is going to be having people speak out like this, whether you're in a community like Windsocket, which is very working class, or you're a community like Little Compton, or like Narragansett. I used to work for the Rhode Island Community Food Bank, and let me tell you, the food pantries in those communities, those lines are out the door. So these are cuts that could not be coming at a worse time, especially in the aftermath of that big, beautiful, terrible bill. So please, really look at this with a fine, look at the finest magnifying glass you can and ask yourselves, "Are these cuts to well-used routes that are so vital?" I mean, the 54 and the 87 run through the arteries of Windsocket. Is this really how we're going to advance things and how we're going to improve things and how we're going to stave off even worse cuts in the future? So thank you very much for your time and attention, and I really hope that we see some change, because our community needs it. Thank you.
You know, I'm speaking from, not just for myself, but for my sister, you know? We have a bank at Park Square, and this is the only way we can get to our bank, is the 54, you know? And I'm just letting you know.
What's your name, please?
Antonio Jalen Chance.
So just ran here from work, so obviously in a fantastic mood right now.
Have you named where you come from?
Mark. Mark McElroy, Windsocket, that's why I'm here. And however my place of work, means of making a living, is in Providence. All right? So I don't know if you, well, okay, that's a lie. I'm guessing you drove here. 146 is a, is a mess. It's not great. It's a, yeah, it's a mess. All right? So, and that's assuming you have a car. That's a, that's a heck of an assumption. All right? So, yeah, people like, and this is, this packet, the little things, you guys broadcasting the things, just literally, one, two, three, four pages, eliminations, eliminations, reductions, eliminations. This, this isn't a solution. This is a cop-out. This is, this is ridiculous. Like, like, okay, you, the explanation you guys provide is revenues and reductions and it's like, you're, you, it's, this is government stuff, all right? You're not a business. All right? You, you work for, these are the people, these are your shareholders. These are the people you work for. So like, if you go to a regular business or whatever, you go to the shareholders, "Hey, guys, we're going to reduce, 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 eliminate," I'm pretty sure, and if you're CEO, I'm sure you're not going to be CEO very long. So, so as the, as a member of your board, I don't want you guys to be CEO or whoever's making these brilliant ideas. I don't want that person to be CEO anymore. So, um, so yeah, I mean, everyone else had very much eloquent, well-researched things. Like I said, I'm just a guy who's just trying to go to work, make a living, and make it through the everyday BS I have to go through every day between all the everything, okay? And I'm sure, and I'm pretty sure everyone behind me, I'm pretty sure their story's very similar. So, yeah, this is not a solution. Like, this is ridiculous. This is absurd, obscene, and think of any other word they can think of, right? So, um, yeah, that's my, that's my public comment. You guys need to figure this out, because this is, this is not how you make, no one would be satisfied. Nobody would be satisfied with this. Nobody takes the bus because it's a good time. They take the bus because they got somewhere to be. All right? Thank you. Thank you.